I called this meeting to order. I looked outside and double see Joyce pulling up. She makes it, she'll be here.
She should.
You notice the way? Short agenda, but an important agenda item to discuss the budget for coming fiscal year. I'll let Warren kind of lead discussion. I'm sure that we have questions about what's been proposed and then thoughts and help maybe modify.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
I'd say let's just flip over to the revenue page of the budget, which is the Schedule One, Page One, about the, if you've got the copy of my message on, it's about the fifth or sixth page over, the Schedule One, Page One, where we have the revenues listed there. The one thing that I want you all to pay attention to is the fact that the revenues are essentially flat. There's not a lot of growth in the landlord taxes nor in the sales taxes you see coming in. So essentially, we have to work within pretty much what we had last year. Janet and I both agree, we need to be very conservative on our growth numbers. We don't want to come in here and say, oh, we're going to grow 10 percent and then end up having problems years in. So I'm very comfortable with the growth numbers we predicted in the meeting, these numbers. Honestly, we will probably exceed our estimated revenues this year by a small percentage, which is good, but I'm not comfortable enough assuming that we're going to do that again next year. So these are very conservative numbers. I'm very happy with these numbers. Not a lot of huge changes in there. If you do look over on the second page, Schedule One, Page Two.
We just got started, Joel. You ain't lost nothing.
The Schedule One, Schedule One, Page Two, we're talking about zoning permits. That's just a good indication that those are down. So, you know, business is picking up, but it's not exponentially showing areas of growth. So we're very conservative on revenues. The first expenditure that you get to is actually the governing body, which is General Government. You'll notice a couple of changes in there. Under Other Professional Services, you'll notice there's $12,000 in that account. That includes some money in there to do some planning over the Quimmy property. Not a lot of money, but some money to get us started planning on the Quimmy property. You'll also notice the bottom line there, Economic Development. That's the money that we committed to appropriating to Quitley slash Tricorn Investment Group over there that we promised for the next four years to pay that recurrent payment to them. So that's the difference in that particular budget there. Any questions on that one? Or do we just keep on page by page? Somebody has a question.
That's more of a, that's the question if they've got one.
On General Government Administration, which is Town Manager and Human Resources, probably the biggest change you'll see, obviously, there's a little bit of change in salary, which is you went from a part-time manager to a full-time manager. But if you also look down at Pay Plan Implementation, we decreased that money considerably. That was money that was always set aside. If you had changes to make to employee salaries or whatever throughout the year, that was the money that could cover those changes. We're pretty comfortable. We've about got those folks where they need to be. There should not be a lot of adjustments from this point on. So we decreased that money considerably. Under Finance, I thought everybody was fine money to cut from her, and I couldn't find it. So essentially, she's flat, basically what she had last year. Billing collections is essentially the same. That's your tax collection, folks.
Who's included in that?
That would be Jessie and Kathy. I suppose you're only two under that. Kathy works front desk, and of course Jessie is tax clerk.
So the collection of the lock and wire that comes out of that park, she's part of the collection.
On the next page, which is Schedule Two, Page Five, you have General Government Legal on Elections. We actually increased our professional services a little bit in there. That's the money that we paid for the town attorney. We did run over that, or it looks like we're going to run over that this year, but you had a lot of stuff going on this year.
Oh, yeah.
So we increased it some, but we didn't probably go what we think we're probably going to spend this year. But we're hammering out a few things that's probably going to require some attorney involvement. We use John Locke. Nobody else, but we use John Locke for those things. But we're still pretty conservative on the increase that may take for that. And then, of course, you've got an election issue. That payment makes the county recover your election expenses for reverse counting back for the elections that you'll have in November this year. Facilities, that's your, a lot of that is your cleaning staff, the basic supplies that goes along with that. Of course, the postage, all the postage gets paid out of that. There's a big number that's in the line of accounts there. But honestly, there's not a lot of changes in that budget either.
I have a question.
Yes, Mayor.
On the, wait, it says other professional services. In 2012, 13, we had 17,000 and this goes to give up.
That was about the ad and best was removed on that.
Asbestos.
Right. That was, that money was put in there for asbestos, and we took that back out this year. So we hope we don't, it's just part of our facilities.
And other services.
Other services. Oh, that's like the, before Dr. Garbage picked up Terminex, that type of stuff.
And those are your banking charges, your actual elevators.
Yeah, I'm thinking about four bins we do every night.
All the stuff, is it?
Yeah.
I'll just see what that other stuff is.
And for those, if you have any questions, we have most of those itemized out. So I have those listed. If you have any questions, we can go over each other's.
I just needed to know what they were.
General Government under IT, one of the differences, you'll notice in this count, under Supplies, where before, a lot of departments have been working on computer supplies or computers. And we went through and did a review of our equipment based on its estimated lifespan, which is usually four or five years for computer equipment. Instead of having those split out under a couple of different departments, we conglomerated those under one account. So that's the reason that account went up, is we pulled some of those supplies out of other departments and throw them back into this one, so it can be worked out in one place. And then. Planning and Economic Development, Schedule Two, Page Eight. You will notice a huge decrease in that one. However, that's basically because of the staff ramp, inter-staff ramp, that we're not anticipating getting. So that's why you have the $50,000 decrease in that one. Other than that, a lot of stuff.
Well, we're on that with the TDA, with that 100,000. How, is that the amount that is in there right now? Because, you know, we have so much in reserve.
No, this is in reserve.
Oh, but this is for the, well, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
How much do we have for reserve?
Ninety, ninety-three percent if I'm wrong.
Well, that's the net now. Because there's spending more than the average.
So already, so we usually get about that, but in, you know, if, if, we need the money for different projects or whatever, that, you know, whoever comes. And it's a gentleman. I have problems saving that.
Summer can probably explain the general concept behind why that money was initially saved. And I, you know, it's not necessarily to do whether I agree with it or not. My understanding is that money is set aside if you were to have something catastrophic, something come through, and you need a ton of money to, for something all of a sudden. Or if you have a special event that nobody could have anticipated coming through. And I, I'd be afraid to even offer an example of what that would be.
The President's going to be.
Then you'd have some funds to fund that. But now.
Something big.
Summer, summer prospecting more about that.
They have.
Well, is it, but do we have a dog in that time?
No.
Do we have, DDA staff, do we have a dog in that time?
Nope.
It's an independent.
Well, it's a TDA, but we're the ones that put it in reserve.
No, no.
No, it's their reserve.
It's their reserve, yes. But it was.
No, I mean, I know you made your point, but we don't have, all we can do is appoint members.
Is that what we're saying?
No, they got, that's the money that came off the room.
Is the room tax, is that, is, do we anticipate revenues from the room tax at being 100,000 dollars a year?
Probably by our, let's see, we had that Montel get tore down. It probably be right at 100 or less. So I think when they first established, my understanding was they was going to spend what they actually collected in a year, and then try to put some back in reserves. And like, fore and spoke, like, for some special event, like some big, I guess, group come or something for the, well, I don't know about the president, but that was actually, I don't know, I guess, I don't know, but it was supposed to be put back in reserve. But another thing is if they spend all the reserve down to zero, they won't be able to spend any money in July, August, and September, because you cannot advance some money. You have to have some money.
I know that. I know that.
So that's the only thing. If they chose to spend it all, they probably could if you didn't amend the budget for them. But in July, till you collect it, they couldn't spend, all they'd be able to do is spend what they had actually collected.
I can see them now reserve. I just have them now.
I think that's something, the consensus that I've got from the TDA Board, they want to revisit that. Should we, you know, a couple of months ago, they actually voted to cap it at 100,000, and it may come to a point where we're looking at it and say, you know, maybe we need to revisit this.
In the back, they actually, Summer said it's less than 100,000 now.
Okay.
But this will be immediate up or down depending on how much money comes to us to the TDA?
Right, right now, you've got 100,000 revenues, and they've already spent 100,000 in expenses. The only way I can legally go ahead and pay for this stuff they're supposed to do is because of that reserve. See.
Otherwise, they'd be behind the track.
Another way, in other words, I'd have to wait till that money comes in and then spend it, you know, as they.
But in the, in the fiscal year, if only 80,000 comes in, they only get 80,000, right?
Well, no, they would have to, we budgeted 100,000 revenue.
Uh-uh.
And if they, they've already spent probably 100,000, they like maybe 600 dollars.
Fine.
So if it doesn't come in, while it happened in that part, we'd have to come out of the reserve.
Out of the reserve of TDA.
Yes.
But never, the town would never put it for this general fund.
No, no.
Okay.
It's a different fund.
Agreed.
It's a solid fund.
Agreed, yeah.
It comes off the.
Agreed. So I'm curious as to why it even shows up in our budget.
Yeah, that's kind of where I was going to.
Right.
I was going to show all money coming in and money going out.
But it don't really come in to us and it don't go out.
Yeah, it comes into the town.
It does.
That means it's in one of our accounts, I guess, in that way.
Yeah, it comes into the town.
Move on.
It's going to be in the.
That's right. And you can't really tell how much, besides yanking somebody off or putting the next person on, which we could do, I guess.
Sorry.
Main Street Program, Schedule Two, Page Nine. You will notice that the overall budget's about the same. We swapped some of those accounts around. One of the things we found was particularly advertising that it may have been packed into supplies before, but like advertising for the red carpet events and the Ruby stuff, it actually needed to be paid out advertising so we could keep track of that. So we actually moved some of those money around. Schedule Two, Page Ten, Traffic and Event Services. That's essentially Gerald Riltz who's event processes there. We really didn't, we really couldn't change anything there. Of course, he only gets 1,000 hours a year, so that's why the dollar figure says what he does.
Okay.
Yeah, he's limited.
Kind of like for the Saturday nights and stuff.
Right. And then he works third of the week a couple of days.
Any of the festivals. So it doesn't have anything to do with the actual scenes.
And let me tell you, we really believe by having the picket here at this location, it's going to take less, you don't have to come set up and all of the barriers and come back and take.
So this doesn't include the picket money?
No, the picket money's actually back on Page Eight, under, it's 28,500 under planning.
Speaking of, have we ever, have we ever had an accounting from year to year on that 28,500?
We have an accounting every month on that, or every week on that, whenever Donnie submits the invoices for what the money's spent for. He only gets reimbursed for the amount of money that goes into it. So it's not a, it's not a blank check.
Not a block grant.
No, no. I have to sign off on it and get it to Janet and give her a check for it.
This is, he pays all the different entertainment and stuff.
Then he gets a 1099 at the end of the year, so he has to show all his expenses and stuff that way.
Because I've had several people come up and comment about picking on square, how much it is for what they feel the talent is not worth. I mean, it's, you know, that it's time for some changes to be made to upgrade it, upgrade it.
Yeah, but the Saturday night, I don't think it's about the level of talent as much as I think it's just about that.
With Spirit getting out of town and with.
It's the hot dogs and ice cream.
Too many twangs. One too many twangs.
Well, could be, Joyce, it could be. It could, but I'm sure that this, I'll need to be made.
On Schedule Two, Page Eleven, the General Government, non-departmental, that's your assessment for your retired law enforcement officers' expenses for them that we incurred. Schedule Two, Page Twelve, your police department, which is actually a considerable amount of our budget, is for the police department.
To work every cent.
The salaries and wages, one of the things I would say that's different for that. We did set aside, and the chief actually asked for a lot more, and we cut it back to what we considered a manageable amount of money. We estimated $12,000 additional for him, which we divided up $6,000 for any kind of required overtime that he might have throughout the year. And then $6,000, if he has to bring all his people in for some kind of training and they can't get while they're on duty. But I essentially told him, he's got $12,000, it's up to him to figure out how he wants to spend it. If he has to give comp time for training and they, something happens, that's up to him for that. And they do have a part-time officer that they use. If they have folks that are off, they'll pay that part-time officer to come in and work if they have necessary or need for it. So that's what that money's for. That's the difference, so.
Oh, I noticed the telephone in 12, 13 was 24,000, and then it went down to 12. Could it run to 100, what?
There was a, some of those bills were lumped together, and that stuff got split out and transferred into Facilities and a couple of the other budgets. So the money is, the phone bill actually did decrease. It just got hooked back up and divided into different departments where it actually is easier to count for. So that's the big difference there. But one of the big things that he wanted to push for this year under uniform was to build through the vests. These vests are, they're out of date, so it's, we really need to get those replaced. And that's good in a uniformer. The equipment maintenance, you'll notice that's a little different. That includes his maintenance contract for the in-car computer stuff, where he can check tags and criminal histories in the car. And you'll also notice a big increase that they have made on that thing. We're going to be bumping the 70,000 dollar mark this time, by the time we do some amendments and get them back where they should be. But that gives them a fuel allowance, tires, oil changes, and a very modest, what we consider miscellaneous for the things that happen during the year that you don't expect. And it also, it also comes with not replacing as many vehicles as perhaps you should sometimes. Chief asked for four this year, and I cut it back to two, which was the two that we had last year. And he agreed to replace the control vehicle, which is 71,000 under the law.
Is the fuel part of that 70,000?
It is part of the 70,000.
Wow. I thought fuel alone would be that much.
Nah, they run $4,500 a month on fuel, 40 pounds.
Really? I thought it'd be more.
How many checks is?
We're, going back to the vest, has the Bureau of Justice dropped the vest program? We used to get all the vest almost at no cost.
I don't know, Bob. That's a really good question. I'll be glad.
I talked to Chief about that. With all the cuts going on, it's probably gone now. But they used to provide, federal government provided you about 80% of all the vest.
And I will tell you, even if that were the case, he originally could ask for 26,000. I cut it back to 17.
The politicians are skimming those vests.
They're about, they're about $8,900 a piece.
Next budget, Schedule Two, Page Thirteen, your streets and maintenance budgets. Obviously, we lost a full-time employee that retired this year. One of the things that Jay and I discussed was making sure that we could keep up with the mowing and making sure that we have right folks to do maintenance. One of the things I did was I included $9,000 to do a, essentially, a part-time employee, which is 20 hours a week for 30 weeks a year, at an average of about $15. But if you do 30 weeks, that'll cover you this year, July, August, September, and October. And then next year, April, May, and June. So that gets you essentially seven months. That gets you the mowing months to get somebody in there. Now, that's a considerable savings over replacing a full-time employee with benefits involved.
Absolutely.
The big numbers in there, you'll see, of course, utilities, we upped our utilities a little because we're expecting an increase from Deep Energy on some of those things. And we get into the other services on this one. That includes the contract for the BACOs, the lease payments on the BACOs, Terminex bills that we have that come in, or the vest control bill, and things like that. Capital aply equipment. Jay actually asked for, he asked for two things in particular that need to come out of general fund, and I was okay with one of them. He asked to replace a chipper, and he also asked to replace or to buy a leaf back to go along with the box that you all already purchased through on a truck where you can, you drive by neighborhoods and pick up the leaves and trash and stuff, that they'll put out in the yard and use it for other pickup stuff. He says that the chipper's fine, that if it glows up, we'll have to fix it and buy another one. But he's okay with it right now. If we can do the leaf back, he can live with that. So, and I'll, I put the 20,000 in for that. And the 50,000 I have there under capital apply improvements is the money that I set aside to do the modifications or whatever we want to do with the gazebo. Obviously, that's, to me, that's a significant amount of money. However, when we get into that project, depending on what we see and what we want to do with it after 1st of July, that may not be a significant amount. Here's my suggestion to you. You already know I've pitched my bill for getting rid of the old town hall. I've already hired an appraiser to redo the appraisal that was done back in '08 to make sure our numbers are up to speed so we can prepare that package. You all have already declared surplus. It's already mandatory, declared surplus. So basically, I need to put the package together, give you the numbers, and then make sure you're okay with the package we send out to try and get rid of it. My suggestion is, that's not going to happen overnight. But if you're not comfortable with 5,000 dollars, and you want to do more to the gazebo up there, which is going to cost more money, when we sell that, perhaps set aside a little bit of that money that comes out of there to go toward this project, if you want to do that, if you think it's not enough.
Quick question. Do we ever decide if we own that or the county owns it?
The gazebo.
They own it, they lease it to us.
Yeah, we have a lease that we also.
Have we approached the county on, chipping in on that deal a little?
Not officially. We have looked at the lease. I have unofficially talked to them today that we want to possibly renew the lease with a little longer term. So we want to put money in something that's a short-term lease. But once we get a little further along, once you okay me with some money to spend when this budget passes, we actually know we've got some money to spend, then I can officially start that process to progress.
Everybody's a brother. You, preachers and veterans and everybody. We're not the only ones that use it, yeah.
Moving on to Page Fourteen, obviously, that's power bill money, which is pass-through money. We, we can actually change those monies around during the year, but it's nice to go ahead and appropriate those into a fund that we can spend money out of rather than have to come back to the board every time and then put those in somewhere if we need them. But all those, that's all our pass-through money that's appropriated, opposite by the revenue.
Is that sidewalks and stuff?
Yes.
Is that part of capital out, or the, for the repair?
Could be either.
Replacing sidewalks would probably be the other repairs.
If you do a new one, we'd do capital out, like.
Capital out with 70.
It's 5,000 or more. Or you could do a street.
Page Fifteen, your debt service. That includes, and Janet, correct me if I'm wrong, that's the portion of the debt you have on the town hall, both parks.
On other parks.
Police Department, I'm sorry, Police Department and the town hall. And your total, that's the total debt service out of the general fund portion of the budget. And you've got a $30,000 contingency bill in there in case there's anything that comes up there in the year that we need the $30,000 for. And then wish your total appropriations for the general fund part of the budget is 3.98 million dollars. I will tell you one of the things that I'm not extremely comfortable with, but you do it when you budget. And this year, remember, I told you that I think we're break even. Last year, you appropriated. And if you'll go back to Page Exhibit A, right here, you got the general fund, fire department fund, enterprise fund. Talks down here at the bottom under total appropriations. It shows appropriation from the general fund of 177,000 dollars. You actually appropriated some money this year from the general fund to get your budget balanced at the end of the year. But remember, I told you, I think we're going to have a little bit extra revenue. We didn't think we're going to have, I think we're actually going to break even this year, so I'm comfortable with that. I'm also comfortable recommending this 177,000 dollars input from your, from your fund balance to balance this budget with 25 cent tax rate, because essentially about $150,000 of that, 177,000 dollars is capital equipment. It's the two police cars, the gazebo, or capital improvements, the gazebo, the leaf back. I'm okay setting that money aside out of the fund balance for capital things, because next year, if we don't have the income coming into balance while we go out of fund balance, you just don't do capital things. You don't hurt your regular operating budget year after year. So I'm certainly okay with that. I'm comfortable with that.
But vehicles are operating budget.
That they are.
Maybe not gazebo, but.
They are. But what I'm saying is, you're not balancing your operating budget as far as salaries, wages, life bill, things like that off your general fund.
Understood.
You're cancelling out what you're getting out of general fund with tangible things that are not on a recurring basis. For instance, next year, if we're not comfortable, we just don't buy police cars and leave backs.
I mean, historically, we've had appropriations which never really became necessary to, I mean, not every year, but historically, right, Janet?
Right, usually, we've been great.
Yeah.
And we're going to get back there. We're going to tweak something, and we're going to get back there. So really, it's, I'm okay with it. Now into your enterprise budgets, which are in fact your budget Schedule, Schedule Three, Page One, which is the fifth page from the back. Talks about fire department revenues. The fire taxes, you'll notice they've got it estimated at 500,000 dollars. One of the things that the county did not do this year was the revenue prediction, predictions I got did not assume back tax collection. Usually, we had about 16,000 dollars we would collect from the previous four years worth of backup. I don't know why they did that, but historically, we're collecting around the 500 to 510 to 512 range. So we were conservative and estimated that at 500,000. And appropriate Schedule Three, Page Two. Under Other Services, there's 186,000 dollars, which almost exactly corresponds with the amount we're taking out of fund balance. There's roughly 700,000-ish in the fire department fund balance, which is pretty much what we owe on the two new trucks that we bought last year. So essentially, all we're doing is we're paying those trucks off out of that fund balance, which is why I'm okay with that process, because by the time we get the trucks paid off, if there's no money left in fund balance, we don't have any debt. So this, this budget will decrease 585,000 dollars to get us back to where we belong. So I'm even okay with that. I'm not a big fan of appropriate money in a fund balance, as you can figure that out. But as long as there's a light at the end of the tunnel, that you're not going to consistently draw off that fund balance to come up with your day-to-day operating expenses, then you're okay. One of the proposals I made to the Fire Committee under this budget was to allow me to continue being the chief on paper of the department as such, and do the paperwork and do what I need to do. But to take essentially the salary money that was applied for that position and essentially hire two other staff entry-level folks. You know, if you already got budgeted for three, you essentially be adding one other person. One of the things that I did.
Without increasing the vote.
Without increasing the vote. One of the things I did was pull our call volume, because the Fire Committee will talk about the numbers. But what we can essentially do with this amount of money you've got is we could do a paid person there seven days a week, 18 hours a day. And it's a modified, it's a modified 24/48 shift. You just don't work them the last six hours. It's a little hard, hard to explain verbally, but on paper, it works out to essentially a 42-hour work a week for them. We ran the call volumes by time of day, by day of week, and there is no difference essentially in the days of week. They're all about the same, but you can certainly see the volumes that run from 7 o'clock in the morning to 1 o'clock at night. So an 18-hour shift will hit right in the peak of this with at least one full-time person there. And then keep a 40-hour a week person there Monday through Friday from nine to five, or eight to four, somewhere in there. So you've got two people, just like we have here today, one person at night. And then the other thing. And then the other thing we'll do, remember last year, we started using our volunteers on the weekend, we do the stipend for them to come in and cover weekend shifts, so we get seven-day-a-week, eight-hour-day coverage. This still allows them to come in and have one volunteer on the weekends instead of two, to keep them interested, they like doing that, I haven't had a month yet where they haven't signed up to do shifts, so that still keeps them interested, gets them bought in. It increases the coverage we've got, but yet it still keeps our budget under the same cap that we had to start with.
But next year, when we decide we, we don't need to be both the fire chief and the town manager, all of a sudden we're going to have to hire a fire chief, and that's going to bump up the budget for the full cost of a.
If you want to move that issue, that's going to be.
Right, so I mean, I'm not sure, I mean, this is setting us up for, in the future, if we have a substantial increase.
It could, possibly, and you have a couple of options for that. We, we could have went to the county this year and said, we want to try and increase our fire tax and go up to four cents instead of three cents, however, I thought that was not very prudent. We are a bargain because not only are we one of the lowest, other than Highland, we are the lowest tax rate in making county per fire district, we have the lowest insurance rating, so they get more bang for the buck out of us than they do anybody. There, there are a couple of places that you can actually recoup that money, and if you'll notice at the bottom, and the reason I'm comfortable with this, Joe, is you look, look down at the bottom under administrative, administration reimbursement. That is a means of essentially indirect accounting or indirect expensing out services within government. That, that money, that $40,000 right there, which I took from $50,000 last year, is what's essentially paid back to the general fund with the town of Franklin to offset the costs of the town manager, the finance officer, the, the folks up here that write the bills and write the checks. My intent is to keep whittling that down over a period of a year or two to where it's nearing nothing. I, I agree that there probably should be a certain percentage applied back to the, the general fund of the town, I just wasn't necessarily comfortable with $50,000. However, I was enabled to get that work down as low as I could, or low as I possibly wanted to this year, just because of the constraints on the budget and upgrading where else.
So how many full-time people will we be hiring that this year?
Two.
Two extras?
Two, you already budgeted for three, because you had three, and then I left, so essentially you don't, you'll be adding two new people, but only one of them will be a decision.
You'll get two for the price of one.
No, 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 ain't nothing like that. I mean, it is for a short term, but we, we can't look as a long-term proposition of having a town manager be a fire chief as well, that's just not a long-term proposition.
But hell, aren't we going to do that?
I don't know that, but I don't want to use that money all of a sudden and now get two new positions in one year, and then look at in a year or two or whatever, and all of a sudden have to pay a full, fund another full-time for a chief on top of that. I, I'm thinking, I'm, I'm thinking that's too much.
But if, if, if we keep whittling away at this administrative reimbursement, though, that number's going to go down.
Because they can do some of that work themselves.
Well, you're, no, you're, you're not going to be paying the town back out of this enterprise fund, you're, you're going to have $30,000, I've already given you 10 back, you, you'll essentially have $40,000 sitting there to go toward this new employee, if, if you want to hire a fire chief once we solve that problem.
But I mean, was there just all of a sudden, immediate need for two more full-time employees?
You need six. You don't need four, you need six.
The fire committee's looked at this pretty closely. With the number of calls that we're getting and all, I think we're going to definitely need these, these four for the coverage, because another thing you have to look at, all of our people are volunteers, with the exception of two. And when you start taking them away from their jobs, as much as we're having to do right now, employers are probably going to get on their case a little bit, and I think that's another thing we have to take into consideration, is the fact that this is saving the volunteer program, which in turn saves two or three million dollars a year for the town.
Well, I don't think too bad that our town is going to go back, I mean, we're not going to decrease the calls.
We're never going to decrease.
We're going to increase, so, and if we're not prepared for that, then in the long run, it could cost us more jobs.
And, and Joe, the other thing I forgot to, to tell you too, obviously, when we, we chipped away at this administrative reimbursement, which you're paying back essentially to ourselves, there's some other money up here under these, these fireman's fees, remember, I'm using the volunteers on the weekends. If, if we increase, if we increase another full-time person next year to cover the chief, that those duties are going to go away from the volunteers on the weekends, so there's about $10,000 to $15,000 in there that will go with the $40,000 down here to get you back to about $55,000 to cover that person. So realistically, I could pull that off if you decided you want to do that without actually increasing this budget.
Sounds good.
And we need to start, we need to start building on that, and what we've talked about with Bob and I and Warren, you know, three years from now, two to three years from now, all the structure will be paid off, and all of a sudden, we've got this extra $100,000 a year going back into our reserve fund, so this year, we might see, we're, we're waiting to kind of see in what some of the other departments, the volunteer departments in the county have asked for increases, the county didn't grant any, like last year, except for a 8% from that a hailup leave is all they allowed on the fire tax on it, and we're kind of waiting to see on that, but we're, we've pretty much been in a position ourselves with the improvements that we've done down there, as well as the insurance improvements and equipment improvements down there, that will be a lot, you know, a lot closer to maybe getting them going for a slight increase in our tax, in our fire tax rate down the road.
Bob, what's that? Oh, I, I just, I wanted to ask a quick question here. The, the thing that the volunteers are doing, of course, is providing a service, do we have a requirement that they be an EMT or first responder to be in?
Medical responders.
On, on the weekend shifts, I have to have one operator and I have to have one medical person, doesn't necessarily, it could either be one person that's both with somebody else, or I, I split it up and have one medical person and one operator.
So what, what, what area is that?
The only thing they have to be is a first responder.
First responder.
Or medical responder type person.
That seems to be a trend for a while.
We have quite, quite a few that are.
That's what I.
That are already EMT, these intermediate folks, so we've, we've got them that are already down there. I have more responders, the only thing that's actually.
It's down, it's almost about, same about I.
Down the road.
Oh, yeah.
On the Schedule Four, page one of the water sewer enterprise budget, you'll also notice the, the revenues up top, and the obviously expenditures equal out at the bottom, you'll notice that our revenues are pretty much flat there, too. Your cap fees obviously aren't, they're growing a little, but they're not what they used to be several years ago, because you just don't have as much development as you do. The, the, some of the big issues in this budget, of course, are your, your infrastructure projects, there, there are four, what I would call small to mid-size infrastructure upgrades in this budget, which is covered under Capital Atlay Distribution Lines, there's sewer line on Bidwell Street, sewer line on Gaston Street, sewer line on First Circle, and then a water sewer line on Park Avenue. Jay went through, and he had six projects listed, and we prioritized those out, came to the conclusion of what we thought we could afford this year, and obviously, if, if we start at the top of the list and we budget for one and we have money left over, then obviously we, it's an enterprise budget, you can either roll that money over and save it for next year, or if we have another emergency or something coming, we'll, we'll deal with that. There is a, one vehicle in this budget, our Capital Atlay Equipment, for $35,000. That vehicle was actually included in this year's budget, and we decided not to purchase it this year, we actually used that money to offset an expense we had with the Syrode Waterline Bridge project over there, that was supposed to be $160,000, and then came down to $200,000, so we actually used that money to cover the difference in there, so the, the truck is essentially a carryover from the one that we didn't buy last year. You'll also notice under equipment maintenance, there's a significant increase, one of the things that, we, we decreased some money from Capital Atlay Distribution Lines, but we increased that equipment maintenance money. One of the last issues we have to deal with, with the sewer plant renovation upgrade, is the belt press, that rebuilds completely the belt press that we currently hold, and according to Wayne, that will get us up to speed for many years to come up on that belt press, so that's the money to go back in there and make sure that, that thing's up to par. And then the Capital Atlay Improvements, there's $30,000 in there to do the paving for the road from the water plant up to the top of the hill there where the county building is, where, where all the work's been done with the sewer plant, and they tore all the road up through there, that covers just that section of road to go from there up to the top.
Warren, what is in the, going to be in our plans to work on that entrance up there up the road? I know that we had initiated some discussions with the church about getting some easement area, it's just such a Y, that sharp Y turn, if they don't come in at the Hardee's, they can't come in the other way and, and make the turn, and there's been some contemplation of straightening out that, is there any?
I don't have it in this particular plan, but we can certainly look at it, so.
Do you know what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah.
It's a terrible, look, just coming in there, it's a, you know, you know what I'm saying, it's such, such an angle.
You can't turn left coming out of.
No, oh, no.
You can't go in left.
We can't go in left, yeah, it's just one way in and one way out, and it's not that hard to remedy with a little help from our neighbors.
It's as bad as maple in the Georgia.
Works.
Sure, we, we can certainly look at it.
Yeah.
That's not a problem. And debt service on page, Schedule Four, page two, that includes debt service for your water sewer stuff, the new sewer plant debt services in there also.
Now, the sources of utility fees, that nine fifteen, nine thirty-five, is that money that comes in from water? Okay, so is that included if you increase?
Well, get to those pages, you got the $935,000 on this page, and you have to, who needs that?
Okay.
So we're hoping to get to a million?
Yeah, we, we estimated that if you follow through with the rate increase we proposed, that would be somewhere between around the $75,000 mark with the water sewer. And if you want to look, I, I assume you also have the pages on the back that show the rate comparisons that have the changes underlined. If you will notice, essentially, there's about a 100% difference between residential inside, residential outside, and then commercial inside versus commercial outside, so that pretty much gets us on par to, to do the, the exact division between inside and outside rates, which is the, the reasoning behind the rate structure that was formulated last year, and then the, essentially, the increasing, the discussion last year was to raise the, the sewer rates 15 cents and split the difference of seven cents one year and eight cents the other year, so that finalizes that. And then down at the bottom, I did you a summary of what it would cost an average consumer, which is usually four to five thousand gallons, so I picked the 5,000 gallon customer, so you, with these increases for that inside residential customer, your increase in water bill is about $2.40, and your increase in sewer bill is about $4 a month, which at the bottom also shows you that the $75,000, which is what we predict the revenue increase will be, and then it shows you how many customers it'll actually affect down at the bottom. The other thing that I would propose to you, if you flip over to the back page, the very last page, the sewage hauler dump rates, currently, we charge $50 a load, which is only a fee change I wanted to look at this year, and that's the biggest budget. Talked to Wayne quite a bit about this, his proposal was to go to five cents a gallon instead of $50 a load, with the reason being that a thousand gallon truck comes in and pays $50, if a 2,500 gallon truck comes in, they pay $50. So it, it splits the, the expenses up more fairly between those vehicles, and probably what's happening is the 2,000 gallon trucks taking two loads of stuff from somebody in there and passing that charge on somewhere, so really, truly, it's not necessarily an increase, it's more of a fairness thing to the larger trucks coming in. Couple of things that I want to hand you very quickly while you're, you're looking at water and thinking about water. I, I, I know a rate increase is not a positive thing, but I really, truly think we need to follow through with that this year, and if you, something I want you to look at as I hand this out, or let someone hand it out. And what it works with this one, I'll give you a note, so. And a lot of times, we, we look at our rates, but we don't necessarily know what other people around us are doing. This particular form you got is what's called the Dashboard Survey through Chapel Hill, that looks at water rates from 300, some odd utilities across 390 across North Carolina. And this, this is our current rate structure as we are right now before you do an increase July 1. If you look at the bill comparison chart up there, we're, we're $43.10, which is what they figured as an average. The, the yellow on the left side of that chart is the, the lowest 10% of North Carolina, so we are just barely above 10%, we're in the lowest 10% or 12% of the rates in North Carolina, so your rates are very competitive compared to, to every other municipality across or utility provider across North Carolina. If you look down Cost Recovery, you'll see that the, the marks are in the red there. That should really be on a one-to-one basis, you should be at about where the, the yellow mark is, because you, you really, truly want your expenses to be equal to the revenue you have coming in. Now, you shouldn't panic because we're in the red, we're down to .89% of that, we're not going broke, that, this assumes a scheduled and set infrastructure replacement plan. Every so many years, you replace sewer and water lines, no matter what, well, we don't necessarily have to do that, we've got stuff that doesn't necessarily go bad, but what it does show you is that there's some room for improvement on our rate structure to, to make sure that we have money budgeted in the future to keep our infrastructure up to par, we don't get to buy 10 or 15 years down the road with some poor infrastructure, and we really need to be up closer to that one-to-one mark there in the yellow, if we're, if we're thinking about going through with this water treatment facility upgrade somewhere in the next four or five years. One of the things I did tell you about the enterprise budget is I did budget some money in there, there's $35,000 in there under other professional services to do a water study of the Carteau J Creek, which is a preliminary study to get your flow rates up, to make sure you're ready to do your expansion on your water treatment plant. And then the last thing to look at on this one, don't even worry about the conservation signal, that has to do with, with the, when you start giving discounts for 2011 in North Carolina, the median household income in 2011 in North Carolina is about $43,000. Most predictions are your utilities will be between 2 and 3% of that, so we're, we're very, we're very economically, we're very, we're okay enough to put it first, we're very affordable, we're very affordable, we're, our, our rates are very affordable, so you have room to increase your rates, it'll affect people, I'm not going to lie, it's going to affect people, they're going to have to pay more, but within comparisons to other utilities across North Carolina, we're still way on the bottom of the list on our rate structure. The next thing I ran you was a 3% increase, which is essentially what you're going to get out of the, the $75,000 we think is generated off this rate increase, and you'll notice that it bumps our numbers up slightly.
Is this assuming that there'd be no rate increases across the board?
This, this is just assuming of the, the $75,000, no, no rate increase across the board, just.
I mean, no rate increases across the state from the other.
Right, right, no increases across state or any bands. But what it does is it, it gets us back up closer to the, you see the .91% down there on cost recovery, we're getting closer and closer to that one-to-one mark, which is a real good indicator that we're financially stable for the future to keep up with our infrastructure and our debt service that we're going to have if we have to do a water treatment facility upgrade, but yet we're still, on the bill comparison compared to the other utilities, we're still way down there, close to the bottom of that yellow, we're still down probably in the, the lower 15% of the other utilities across North Carolina as far as expenses. The one thing I will caution you with, and you'll see the little caution here on the left, when, when you go up on your rates, sometimes your, your income won't necessarily climb as much as the percentage you had in the rates, because people either conserve or cut back, and we've actually seen that in our rates, we, we, not only have we seen our revenues not climb as high as the percentage that was put in there last year, you actually may have fewer customers now than you did before, just because some people can't afford it, but realistically, I think you have to follow through with that rate structure that you proposed last year, go through with this issue.
And we need to continue to build money, go into that fund in the future, of rates of the water system we're going to be doing, paying off. If we don't, then we're in a tremendous water increase.
And I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna sit here and tell you that we don't need to go back and look at that again in the future. We may need to do a detailed rate study sometime in the next year or two just to see for sure where we're at. This is a good snapshot. This is a pretty good indication of where we're at. We know where we're at now, but once we get further into this water treatment facility stuff and we kind of look at the future five, ten, fifteen year down the road, we need to make sure we're set fiscally to handle that when that time comes and we need to do that.
Well, by then we'll know about exactly what we think. Now we know what it's gonna cost us. We know pretty much what it's gonna cost us and we want to know how many years to pay that off. And we look to see if our rate structure is correct to be able to cover the expenses that we're gonna have to put out with improvements.
The only other big issue, and I'll just lay it out on the table before anybody brings it up, we'll go back to the general government side. I'd impose two percent cost of living for your employees. The justification comes from the Consumer Price Index. I have the latest numbers for those. Usually, your, your cost of living is a little bit higher than your Consumer Price Index because Consumer Price Index tells you what stuff costs. In order to actually get that after taxes, your cost of living should be a little bit higher. For instance, if the cost of living, if your Consumer Price Index is two percent, your cost of living should be two point three to two point five percent. However, the, flat out this year, the Consumer Price Index is two point one percent and I propose two percent cost of living. In all actuality, the two percent cost of living is probably still underestimated a little bit according to these numbers, but I'm still comfortable with that number. Other than that, Mr. Mayor, I want to make a quick.
We appreciate your work. You've done a good job. It really does. Good presentation. Now, we'll open the floor for whatever anybody wants to say about the budget.
When do we decide how we're gonna set up our money budget for nonprofits?
Isn't that usually around September?
September. We send out the notices after the, after the budget year's started.
I have to have that.
And then send out the applications into us and then we'll get those and you'll have a chance to look at them. That money's in our lives, appropriation.
You budgeted forty thousand last year and I put forty thousand back in there.
I noticed we don't have any money budgeted for annexations this year.
Amazing. Budgeted for cessation from North Carolina?
No, by the time we put some in there. We might be able to do a fundraiser and.
I'm telling you folks, if you're keeping up, this is the scariest federal assembly in the United States. I'm sorry, but it is.
Yeah, let's don't get there.
Well, I'm ready to.
Well, yeah, but we're. But that's why I got anything directed. All right, go, Bob. Come on. You got the floor?
No, I don't want the floor anymore. I've got a question. The next couple of years will be a reevaluation. It won't really affect, I mean, we go on what the county's evaluation is and the budget, even if the taxes do increase a little bit, it's all basically the same. How does that affect us on the fire department since the fire department is not, is it a, what is it, not zero neutral, but a?
We will have to provide a revenue neutral budget for the enterprise budget for the fire department, just as we do for the general fund budget.
That's all.
Yeah. And essentially what, and that's a good topic to talk about, Farrell, with. One of the things you'll see in two thousand and fifteen is those, obviously, we'll have to adjust probably the tax rate to match the decreased property values that I think you'll see. I don't think the town will see as big of a decrease in our overall property values as some of the rural areas because your rural land's what's not holding back. Your commercial land's actually holding better percentages than that. However, we do have some significant vacant properties. If you look at city limits, there's a lot of vacant properties in cities. So it will make a difference. Most folks are concerned that, and when you say revenue neutral, everybody thinks, oh, I'll pay the same taxes. And that's not necessarily the case because the values that seem to be holding more true are your middle-class, middle-value homes and stuff like that. Your lower classes, the lower value homes are probably not gonna hold as much value and your higher value homes are not gonna hold as much value. So unfortunately, the middle section of your home values are probably what's gonna end up paying more taxes. But unfortunately, there's nothing we can do with it, but that's all in the hands of the revaluation.
Yeah, people get the cart before the horse. You don't set your mileage rate and then spend what's gonna be brought in at that. You figure as a board what you feel like is reasonably necessary to keep the town or the county, in this case, the town, operating at a level that you believe is important to do that. And then that spits out a number of expenses and then you have to set the mileage rate to cover it. You back into it rather than set it first. I mean, that's the way it should be done. Politically, it's hard sometimes to think about that.
Bob, did you have a question or did I by chance answer your question?
I'm trying to think of something to aggravate you all.
Yeah, he's talking about what states go. He's looking at Costa Rica.
You will not stop this from around the front, Bob, that we may have to come back and look at things depending on what happens down here.
All right, so, oh, I know what it was. We get reimbursed for anything that we buy and pay sales tax on. Is that correct? Because I noticed that the legislature now wants to start taxing sales tax on services.
What happens to us, it's a wash, it's no income. And it's actually expense, a huge expense to the town. Every time there's any tax on a invoice, I, something usually me. You sit there and divide it out into the state rate and the county rate and you code it differently, you have to enter it differently. And then once a year, I have to file a report to get all that back. So if I ask for a hundred thousand, you just get back to a hundred thousand.
What I'm wondering about is if the legislature's gonna work it around to where any services that we provide.
Our services association has for years has tried to get the. Has tried to get that sales tax, you know, that we don't pay sales tax at all. But see, it's really just a wash. You pay it out and then you get it refunded once a year.
We're not taking choice with this when we go to.
Thanks, Bob.
The variable sales tax is gonna change in July. The state's gonna start.
September's gonna start, yeah.
July's gonna start in July.
Well, September's what I said.
Well, I don't know. They said that if the highest thing I was at is gonna start in July first.
You don't pay your county taxes on the vehicles in Moore County.
You have to go to, when you leave your town.
Everything's coming on one deal.
Is that money come back to the county if they give us our share or they come back to the state?
The state's collected. Then supposedly the county gets it next and then they're supposed to pay us our share. But before the county collected it, then they give us our share.
And that's the two hands it's gonna be.
What's the next step, Warren?
Well, obviously, you have a public hearing scheduled for that meeting in June. If you desire another work session, we can do another work session between now and then or we can wait till the public session and when you have the public hearings, what kind of comments you have. And then you can either, at that point, if we haven't addressed all your questions, we'll pass the budget that Monday in June or we may have to continue that meeting if there's more issues. We need to continue on to the second or third week in June and pass it again.
How do the department heads feel about what worked with them on this budget?
The ones I've talked to obviously didn't get everything that they wanted, but they seem to be able to work with them what we've got. I don't know that there's any essential service that we've cut. There is nothing that's really going to decrease the level of service we provide. We may not be, we may not have any frills and there may not be some things in there that they wanted to do or actually probably needed to do. But to hold a line on expenses and still keep them doing the services they want to provide, I'm comfortable with it.
Mayor of the Fire Chiefsville, please.
Okay, board.
I really feel like.
More questions about the budget, more comments, more suggestions.
I feel a lot of good explanation was given on a lot of the different items that I wouldn't have understood otherwise.
And honestly, if you do have other questions, I actually have a file on each one of these that either Jan and I worked on or the, for instance. I was gonna say, the department.
He does, but he didn't tell us.
I have a file on everyone. The public works one, for example. They have everything broken. It's in the line items. Have any questions about the line items? We have those here that I can always show you those if you have a question.
Good deal.
Wait, your motion to adjourn. Second.